It's supposed to-
It's got so much snow on it.
It's supposed to warm up tomorrow.
Yeah, and then tomorrow night, it's supposed to snow again.
Well, so if you jet in, maybe you get it the right time.
Yeah, see, I have to come back the next day. And that's why I'm more concerned by coming back.
Yeah, maybe stay home.
This meeting of the Cannon Beach Planning Commission is in order. If you haven't yet, would you please silence the ringer on your phone? I realized on my way here that I had left mine at home, so I won't go need to do that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second? Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rissley?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Packard?
Present.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Chair Lundy?
Yes. That was a-
Interesting bunch of presents.
Yeah, I thought it was a motion.
It was a motion.
Did we not? Did we have some people who were not voting in favor of moving the agenda?
Not here.
Okay. Abstaining or something? Is there a motion? All right, does anybody have any corrections to the minutes? I don't think, I've got a few typo kind of things, but I don't think they need to be, they're not really substantive. Anybody else? Okay, can we approve the minutes by consensus? What's the word, acclimation, something like that? Anyway, by consensus, okay?
Yes.
Good. The first order of business is a public hearing and consideration of V-1801, request by James Adams and Kerry Berg for a variance to allow a two-story addition to a non-conforming structure located at 264 West Kenai. Is that the right pronunciation?
Kenai.
Kenai? Thank you. James Adams and Kerry Berg are requesting a variance to allow construction of a two-story addition to an existing non-conforming structure. The proposed alteration, there's a typo, exceeds 50 percent of the fair market value of the building. The two-story addition will conform with, the two-story addition will conform with current setback requirements. However, the existing cabin is located within setbacks. The property is located at 264 West Kenai, Act Slot 6901, MAP 41006 B.C., and in a residential moderate-density R1 zone. The property is owned by James Adams and Kerry Berg. Municipal Code Section 17.82.040B, non-conforming structures, requires a setback reduction if alterations exceed 50 percent of the fair market value of the building. Municipal Code Section 17.12.040B standards requires a side yard setback of five feet and front yard setback of 15 feet. The request will be reviewed against Municipal Code Section 17.84.030, variances, criteria for granting. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts? Does any commission, has any commission member made a site visit? Yes. Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is a variance to allow expansion of a non-conforming residence. Nonconformance, nonconformity is with respect to the front yard setback and the west side yard setback, it's an older existing building. The thing that's a little different about this than many of the other applications similar to this that come to you is that the proposed construction will all be conforming, that it is, the new parts of the building will all be within setbacks. However, there, the existing building does not conform, and I can approve that kind of construction if it does not exceed 50 percent of the existing building's fair market value. In this case, it does, though, hence it comes to you instead of an administrative approval from me. The variance criteria you should be familiar with, the ones that stand out to me anyway have to do with the stricter literal interpretation resulting in hardship, exceptional or extraordinary circumstances, and the self-inflicted requirement in 30B. They're in the staff report, the applicant's, the proposed findings are there also. The staff report has a picture of the building and a location map at the end. It has the materials submitted by the applicants, an extensive set of drawings here. That's all I have in the way of a staff report for you.
Thank you. Any additional correspondence besides what we saw? I noticed we got one relatively late.
Yeah, there's two on your, the dais in front of you. One's from Elaine Truckee, and the other one is from Patrick Mofield.
I think we got both of those by email.
You probably did, but I wasn't sure everybody would get that.
Thank you.
If there was something received very late in the day, we'd generally cut this off at about five.
Thank you. The pertinent, this is the call for public testimony. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports and noted on the criteria sheets next to the front, the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Municipal Code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue recludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Is it my turn?
Yep.
All right.
You're on. Please identify yourself and give your mailing.
My name is James Adams, and currently our mail address is 7309 34th Avenue Northwest, Seattle, Washington. And that's hopefully going to change here in the next couple of years. What spurred this project on is the fact that we are retiring and looking to move here full-time, and the structure as it's set up now doesn't really accommodate that. I won't bore you with a lot of stuff you've seen, you know, you've gotten all this work. I know you've looked through it. I just want to hit a couple of the highlights from what we think is relevant to this. As you know, the building was built 70 years ago, a little over 70 years ago, in Portland for the shipyard workers during World War II. Then it got bought and moved here and landed here in the late '40s. So it's been, it's been there for about 72 years, I think, as I understand it. We discovered it about 10 years ago, bought it, we've loved it. The historic aspect of it, it's got a very unique architecture, as you might imagine, having been built for the purpose that it was built for. They did add a bardal fireplace into it once it arrived here, and it's got beautiful VG for flooring. It's just, again, it's wonderful, we love it. What it doesn't have is all the insulation, what it doesn't have is enough room for, well, basically, we'd like to take it from post-war Portland to current-day Cannon Beach, I guess is what we're looking to do. We think it's historically significant. The Cannon Beach History Center Museum thinks it's historically significant. You've heard from two of our neighbors, just recently Patrick wrote and supported it, and was thrilled that even Bob Cronkitt, who is our neighbor to the east, recognizes that, yes, we're going to block some of his view, but we're doing the same thing he did, which is trying to go up a second story and make the house, again, a more appropriate situation for us. And even as he said, if you want better view, you could buy waterfront, you know. So he acknowledges it. And, and we did work hard. Part of what we're doing actually is, we are trying to maintain as much of that cottage as we can. It's not just, oh yeah, we like it, boom. Our second-story addition is pushed back 28 feet from the property line instead of the minimum 15 feet. And part of the, one of the main reasons we're doing that, well, there's two reasons. One is, it allows us to preserve the interior of 28 feet of that existing cottage without any kind of alteration to it, and that's wonderful. And the second thing it does is actually helps our neighbor's view. Their main view, really, in their house is from their master bedroom on the second floor, and this allows them to have the exact same view they have now. It doesn't interfere with them because we're set back that far. So that's a real positive. So just to go over real quickly, you know, you guys have been by, you've seen it, but this, this is the problem. This cottage is seated too close to the street. But, you know, it seems to be really happy there. Would hate to, hate to disrupt it. Our intent, from a design perspective, is to keep it and look like a cottage and keep the cottage vernacular. This section here is the existing, to keep that and then tie in with a two-story element in the back that basically provides us with a sleeping cabin, if you will. This one becomes our public zones, and then all the bedrooms and bathrooms are in the new section. Yes?
What happens to that cute little thing behind it?
The cute little shed behind it? It gets reduced in size, but a new cute little shed goes behind it. I know, we love that shed, too, but it's also falling down and kind of, it wasn't built for the long haul by the people previously, so our hope is to provide another one, not quite as much ground cover as that one does, but basically looking the same, because, as you can imagine, you heard from my wife there, from Kerry, who-
It's really cute. We're cute.
Yeah, it's really cute, and it breaks her heart to think of it going away. And then from the back, just looking back, this is, again, two bedrooms stacked here, two bedrooms stacked here. And you can see where we jog at, at the break where the existing property is, to get into the conformance with, with what we've got going on. So that is the proposed plan. If there's other questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We're, to us, it's, it's just a really great story about what the architecture was like, how we built the housing during the war, the fact that we reused that housing and brought it here, and our intent is to reuse it some more. And, you know, great recycling story, if nothing else, so.
So I was curious, on this, I think it's the fifth page, this probably has nothing to do with what you're doing, but it has Slot 3, Block 1, Sylvan Park. Was this a city park, or was this city property at one point? Do you know, Mark?
No, that's just the name of the subdivision. The developer was thinking flowery and-
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Are there presentations by proponents? Are there presentations by opponents? And I'm guessing the, oh, sorry, I missed one. Is there a staff response?
Nothing here.
And I'm guessing the applicant doesn't wish to make additional statements at this moment because he could have made a few seconds ago. I have no reason to believe that the hearing is being continued, so I'm closing the public hearing and moving to consideration.
Comments?
I have a question, Mark.
Yeah.
Why is it that if you're adding more than half the value to a non-compliant property, that you're not allowed to do that?
It's a, a line is drawn somewhere, and 50 percent was the chosen number. Below that threshold, if the petition is compliant, I can approve it administratively. If the, if the addition wasn't compliant, then you'd be looking at it whether it was 50 percent or not.
Well, maybe I, maybe I'm misdirecting, you know, the question. Question I have is, why was this put into the code?
It's a common way of dealing with a community like us where we have a large number of non-compliant dwellings. The question always comes up in these types of communities, how are you going to deal with people's needs to remodel? And if this was a brand-new community, brand-new subdivision, everything there was compliant, this, this wouldn't be in play, because it just wouldn't be in play, because there are no non-conforming dwellings. But in our community, you go down that block, I've not done a survey, but I bet half of those buildings are non-conforming with one respect or another. So you have to have some way of dealing with those, and the way Cannon Beach has chosen to deal with it, which is not too dissimilar from the way other communities do it, is administratively, I can approve modifications that don't exceed 50 percent. In excess of 50 percent, they are going to need some sort of an approval from you, and that's going to vary on the facts, but in this case, it's a variance approval. You don't have to, you know, communities don't have to allow that, but there's quite a bit of pressure to do something like that. The alternative, and the applicant actually touched on this, is I can tear this building down and build from scratch in a conforming way.
Or move it.
Or move it. Those are, those are options that are still available under our code. The code is written to provide this additional option.
Well, you know, I look down this, this road, and on that side of the road, it looks like this is the most non-conforming structure on the, on the road. And the question I guess I'm really asking, to get down to it, is, is there any intent in this code to bring the town up to standard? Is that implied in?
Yeah, I think it's implied here, because the easier path for somebody is to just, as you suggested, either move that dwelling back into a conforming position on the lot and build from there, or tear it down and build conforming. So those are the, of the paths that are open to the applicant here, the path of least resistance would be just what you suggest, bring this entire package into conformity and go on from there. You would never see that, and in fact, there are plenty of those you don't see, because that's, that often happens. Most people will choose the route of least resistance there. But they do, you know, for a variety of reasons that are easy to imagine, they do leave this option open. If somebody really feels that they can't or don't like those two paths, there's this third path, which is harder, because it requires approval in a public setting, that the city's left open.
Well, or just leave it the way it is, and live with it or sell it, or?
Yeah, yeah, all of those are the, the less difficult paths to take.
You see something that's non-conforming like this, and you have to ask the question, is this going to be suitable to live in for a good while, or am I going to want to, you know, essentially build another house? Because that's what's going on, is this is turning into another house. And, and I've always wondered why we have rules like this, if the city's intention in the first place wasn't to try to get as many houses into conformity as possible through, over time.
I think over time, that is the city's intention. However, they've built this escape hatch into the code, like most cities have, because there's the recognition that unforeseen circumstances, facts that we can't foresee when we write the code are likely to come up, we need a way of dealing with those, and this is, this is it. That doesn't mean you have to approve it because it's in the code, but it does mean that it's a path available to an applicant, they can ask.
If I remember right, it looked to me that the houses along that road were similarly placed near the road. Is that true?
Not by the picture I'm looking at.
They vary.
They vary.
They vary.
Yeah.
The two beside us are both at the, were added later and conform.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely a mix there. Across the street, same story, some of them are tight on the front, some of them aren't.
Well, to me, this seems like a fairly reasonable request, and they're trying to accommodate their neighbors, keeping the style, maintaining the style, preserving the history.
I would have to agree with you in the fact that they are trying to keep the history in it, and the fact that we have letters from several of their neighbors supporting this project. I'm impressed that they've taken into consideration their views and-
And none objecting.
And not objecting.
And no, yeah, none of them have been objecting. I noticed, with the exception of the motel, I guess it is, up, up the street, every other house on both sides of the block is already built on, more or less, or built from, built a, that comparable size of house from scratch.
Yeah.
I don't have in mind to, to make anything of this, but it, it didn't occur to me when I was there, and it did occur to me just now. Is the present building on a foundation?
It is.
It is? Okay, so that, that would make it, it wouldn't make it impossible to move it on the lot, but it would make it more difficult. Are we ready to go to a motion? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'm moving to approve the variance request.
Just a second. Is there any further discussion before a vote? Okay, Alicia?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rissley?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sorry.
Chair Lundy?
Yes. Okay, I got it.
I'll get the-
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Decision document will lie out on this tomorrow.
Absolutely. If you missed us, 2010 cottage tour.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business. This is a continuation of a legislative hearing regarding consideration of ZO-18-01 and CB-18-01, Boarding and Management Plan Amendments. Is there a staff report?
I gave you a short staff report. Last month, I indicated that I had learned fairly late in the cycle that the Doggamy report, John Allen report, was being revised, and depending on who you talked to, those were either minor revisions or minor revisions that addressed some key points for us, particularly revegetation. So I had some conversations with Doggamy's staff, including one of the other authors on that article, Laura Seidel, and she indicated that John was, had been in a hospital, medical emergency, and all this stuff had fallen off the table for quite a while, so that didn't come to us in time. For those reasons, I'm asking you to continue this yet again to March. I would ask that you, there are people here who want to testify, particularly people who haven't testified yet, you should probably take their testimony, since they went to the trouble of coming out tonight, but I would ask that you continue this to March for written and oral testimony, and perhaps a decision at that time. I have a, I'm scheduled to talk to John himself, who apparently is back at work now, next week, and I'll get a firm date from him on when that document will be available. As soon as it's available, I'll get it out to you, even if it's not part of the regular cycle, because it's a lengthy document, and you'll need to reacquaint yourself with it, and hopefully I'll be able to highlight those changed parts for you to-
Can you get him to, assuming that this is done in a, is being done in a desktop publishing system of some kind, it shouldn't be too hard to highlight the changes.
Yeah, it's, this is all Microsoft Word, so we should easily be able to find those changes. There are, there are kind of two classes of changes here. Some of them are what I would consider nitpicky editorial changes required by his agency that really don't affect the substance of it, and then there are some substantive changes, too, as I understand it. So anyway, I'll, I'll make sure that we get some version of it that highlights those changes.
Good, thank you.
And so would every, if we continue it, will people be able to speak at the next?
That's up to you, but I would recommend that you do continue it for oral and written testimony, both.
I'm seeing a couple of nodding heads. I, I don't have, my inclination is to, to say yes, and, okay, I think I'm, I think we've got a majority already for that, so.
Because the weather's been pretty bad.
I beg your pardon?
The weather's pretty bad for maybe some people that wanted to travel today.
Yeah, come to think of it, I know we had a request specifically mentioning that as one of the considerations to. Okay, with that said, just so I've got an idea of what we're looking at, can I see a show of hands of people who would like to speak about this matter this evening? Couple. Okay.
Got a couple more.
That's fine. Yeah, okay, here we go. Are there presenting, let's have a presentation by a proponent of the request. For the, for, for a proponent of the changes being made that have been, in the back. Would you come up to the podium?
While he's coming up, when you do get to the end of testimony, and you are going to, if you do continue it, the meeting date is 3:22, so make sure you mention that, and we won't have to re-advertise it then.
Oh, good, thank you.
Well, and we also do have another request for continuation from Oregon Coast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That your next regular meeting date will be 3:22.
Yeah, I, one, one moment. Does Ms. LaFollette have standing to request a, an extension at this point?
Well, of course, you can request it, you're not obligated to give it, because that's, that obligation only falls on the first evidentiary hearing-
Oh, that's right, okay.
-which has already occurred. This is the second evidentiary hearing, so she certainly can make the request.
I think we're inclined to, to go that way, and that was, that was just more for the future.
Yeah.
Of course she has standing.
Yeah, there's no question she has standing. The only difference is that you're not required to grant her request the same way you are-
I'm sorry, that was what, yeah.
-if it had been at the first evidentiary hearing.
She has an organization that encompasses this North Coast.
Mm-hmm. Okay, sir.
My name is Stan McCleary. I'm a resident of Chapman Point, the north end of Chapman Point. And I've been there since 2003.
Could I interrupt you for a moment? For, for the record, could you say what your mailing address is, please?
2872 Northwest Cumberland Road, Portland, Oregon.
Thank you.
So I, I would have come to the last one, but I wasn't able to, so I figured I better come to this one. I figure as long as I'm here, I might as well-
I'm unable to either, so I-
Now, some of these amendments that we're waiting for, maybe they're, they're addressing the very thing I'm talking about. But I think one of the primary points that Chapman Beach North End, people are concerned about, is that the entire Chapman Beach literal zone be treated as a, as a, as a unit, as a holistic management area. But the reference in the documents is a little misleading, because, I think partly because of historical reasons, back when Breakers was the only thing there, it's referred to as Chapman Beach slash Breakers Point, as a management zone. And it doesn't make a great deal of sense, since it's one huge area, that, that all of the state requirements and the, and even the city requirements would seem to indicate should be managed as, as a whole. The multiple references to Goal 18 of the state are calling for managing an entire beach, including adjacent areas, and considering the effect on surrounding properties, doing it on an area-wide basis, and language to that effect. And it could very well be that it's just language, and it could very well be that the amendments are going to clear that up, because I don't think you can manage just the south end of Chapman Beach and have it make a great deal of sense. And maybe it was never intended, actually, to manage simply the south end. The, the north end of Chapman Beach may or may not, depending on how a deed restriction is interpreted, be bystanders for what goes on, or full participants as to what goes on. There's a deed restriction, I'm sure everyone's aware of, against grading dudes for view enhancement, which, in our view, was a, was a construction restriction at the time, to keep people from messing with the dunes when they're actually building their homes. And no, that's not before you, but the point is that at some point, it might be before you. And if it ever is before you- be before you, and if it ever is before you, then you will indeed have to manage the entirety of Chapman Beach. If it's never before you, um, and Chapman Beach is obliged to just, I mean, the north end of Chapman Beach is, is obliged to just, just passively watch, it, it still should be before you to, to manage the entirety of, of Chapman Beach, just, um, by geological standards and state standards for taking a holistic view of beach management. So, you know, I'm, I'm really delighted that we're finally getting around to doing this, and, um, it's, um, I guess my, 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 my point would be, let's, let's just make sure we do it right, because the maximum flexibility you write into this sort of thing, the more room the move you have going forward, as science evolves, as perspectives evolve, even as politics evolve. The, um, the other point I would make is, uh, there's, there's some ambiguity in the, in the documents as to whether or not European beach grass is, is to, you know, is totally out of favor, or might be partially still in favor, and hopefully that got cleared up too, because, uh, I think it's pretty evident that it's, uh, it's gotten to be a runaway freight train. It's, I mean, it's not even safe, I don't think. There, I was at the beach, um, last weekend, and with the, the ocean erosion, there, there are literal cliff faces of ten to fifteen feet in height that are downright dangerous, particularly if kids were to tunnel into them. So, at, at some point, we're gonna have to, I think, replace European beach grass with, with, uh, the, what was recommended in the Dog, uh, the, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it, the Doggamy report.
Doggamy.
Yeah. He, he doesn't seem to favor European beach grass, which was certainly welcome, although he seemed to think that the native was an option, but, you know, anything that dies back in the winter is not going to have a great deal of aesthetic appeal. So, the eastern, um, beach grass would be, uh, seemed to make more sense to me. So, that's, uh, that's about it. I mean, I, when I was looking at one of the, um, the tables, I think it was table four on page seventy-six of the handout, uh, it seemed to me that the dunes were three or four times bigger than they used to be, fifteen years ago, or thirteen years ago even, and according to this report, that the volume of, um, of beach at Chapman Point is, is tenfold over the last sixteen years, which is, I guess, really not a huge surprise, because that's what it looks like. So, I applaud the efforts to manage it. Good luck.
Any questions?
How do you mean that this deed restriction that you referred to is historical and only reverted construction?
Uh, I didn't speak with the developer directly myself, but that was, uh, what people I've spoken to, who have spoken to him, said that that was the intent, that when people were building their houses, it, the idea was not to mess with the dunes, not to, you know, decide, well, I could see better if I took, if I clipped off that part of the dune, but to leave the dunes where they were, so that, to not enhance your view. In fact, that's the precise language of the, of the deed restriction, is you don't grade the dunes to enhance your view. So, the, um, most of the language in the, in the, in the regulations use words like maintenance, or, or restoration, that sort of thing. They don't use the word enhance quite so much, if, if at all. So, the, uh, the argument at some point, though I know it's not before you now, would be that it was never intended to let the dunes go up twenty feet and, and not be able to do anything about it. But no one wants to get rid of the, the dunes. I mean, even halfway back to where they started, it would probably be fine, but, uh, as it is now, it's, uh, I mean, we, you know, they're...
It's pretty clear on the deed, isn't it?
Uh, enhancement is clear, yeah. It, it would come down to interpreting what that means.
Well, the, the dunes are there, the dunes were there then, they're there now, but they're...
We'd be happy to restore them back to where they were, or even where they were back in two thousand eight. I'd say, I'd say from two thousand ten to two thousand eighteen is when they really started getting mountainous. Before then, from two thousand three to two thousand ten, at least, well, time I've been here, that the amount of increase wasn't that big a deal, but now it's, it's, uh, it's huge.
See, I think your argument for taking the whole beach as a unit makes a, a good deal of sense.
Yeah.
And, but that doesn't have anything to do with grading the dunes. What it has to do with is, where's all that sand coming from, and is what's going on with Chapman Point, or with, with, uh, with the condos?
The Breakers.
Breakers Point.
Right.
Um, has, has that work created more sand?
Right.
At, at the north end of the beach? So, it's a question of, of, if you're going to manage the, the dunes in front of Breakers Point, manage them so that it doesn't dump a lot of sand on the north end of the beach?
Yeah, certainly, yeah. Manage, manage it as a whole, because...
But that doesn't have anything to do with the, the restriction on the deed.
No, it's, it's just, I, I only mention it to, to indicate that, I mean, it's, it's a two-pronged point, that one prong is if we're, if the north end of Chapman Beach is, is under a deed restriction, and we're obliged to sit back and watch passively while the dunes are managed, then of course, that's an argument for managing them as, as a whole, so that we don't let it get any less worse. And, uh, if at a later point in time, it comes before you, you know, to interpret what was intended by, by the deed restriction, and whether it makes sense to regard that as governing the future, as well as the, what was around originally, then, uh, I guess it's another way of saying, we're here, and, and we, we care about the dunes, and we care about the, the lack of biodiversity, we, we care about, uh, safety, and we, we care about the protection.
I think that's where the argument is.
We, we lay out thousands of dollars every year, just to get rid of the, uh, just the, the Scotch broom. We, we maintain them, you know, we have a lot of interest in them, and, and if you're an oceanfront homeowner, you have a lot of interest in dunes, but whether or not you have an interest in a mountain is another matter. It's, um, so, we have a very keen interest, whether it's ever going to come before you, that, uh, exactly what we're allowed to do, you know, I guess, I guess we'll see.
Well, it has before, so...
Yeah, I, I have to let you know that we, we have had earlier discussions of, of sand management, you know, in earlier years, and I have never had the impression that we're going to have a say about that deed restriction. It, it has always seemed like it was, uh, decided by a court, and that nobody's going to ask us, or give us any, any say, if, if we, if we ever say that I, that...
Well, yeah, it's, it's not...
...starting to think about that.
It's, it's not before you now, and I understand, uh, that it's not the point of today's hearing. I, I guess I just want to say that, from our point of view, you know, we haven't totally
Sure.
uh, backed away from the notion that at some point in time, we might be allowed to do it. Exactly whose impermoder we would need, I guess, remains to be seen.
Mm-hmm.
We'd have to probably provide evidence as to what legislative history, so to speak, was what was intended, all that kind of stuff. But, but, you know, the same management principles apply if we're passive or active. It, it should be managed as a whole, is my point, and I, I would imagine that, that the amendments are going to address that, I would, I would think, because it's in accord with state guidelines, if, if nothing else.
Well, you, you may have to stand up to, you know, future efforts to, to restore views, or whatever, at Breakers Point, uh, and make the argument that this is all one beach, and what happens at one end of the beach shouldn't affect adversely, from your point of view, the other end of the beach.
Oh, sure.
And, and I think that's where your argument is strong, but in terms of dealing with the deed...
Oh, yeah, well...
Yeah, that's...
I'd have to, I'd have to give you more information than secondhand stuff, for sure, but it's, and obviously, there's strong opinions out there about messing with them at all, depending on who you ask, right?
Right. Different issue.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I, I have to, no, I won't say that. I, I don't have to say it. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Sir?
I'm David Snodgrass. Uh, my address is three nine four four Southwest Halcyon Road in Twallington, Oregon, nine seven oh six two. I'm the president of the Chapman Point Homeowners Association, the current president. I have a residence at seven one six Oak on Chapman Beach. I'm a business owner in Cannon Beach, and today I'm speaking on behalf of myself, as well as nineteen homeowners' properties along Chapman Beach. So, first of all, you know, we definitely appreciate the hard work being done by the city to update the management plan. It's been twenty years, and there's been incredible dune changes, I think we all are aware of. It's also important, the work that's being done in order to align with Goal 18, the statewide guidance. We support the commission's desire to balance the natural and human environment, to stabilize the dunes, to restore areas threatened by erosion, and to protect areas impacted by accretion and sand inundation. We support the use of native and American beach grass over non-native European beach grass in favor of wider and lower dunes. It just only makes sense. There are many important reasons for dune management. Provide easy access to the beach, safety, control of invasive plants, like the Scotch broom that, um, we manage out of our, out of our dune. If you remember about maybe eight years ago, the Scotch broom was taller, was ten feet high, and now it's, it's a clear dune, thanks to our efforts. Um, protection of structures from sand buildup, restoration of eroded beaches, and for view preservation, or restoration, to what previously existed, rather than view enhancement. And we talked a little bit about this with Stan a minute ago. I, I think that it's a, a interpretation that needs to be made now. What is view enhancement, and what is view restoration? You know, go, twenty years ago, when I bought my lot on Chapman Beach, um, you know, I was aware of that restriction, that said that you couldn't do, uh, dune, you couldn't do view enhancement grading, it was prohibited, and so I go, hmm, you know, that's okay. I, I understand that, as I build my house twenty years ago, you know, I, I can't level the dune and, and try to get a better view than what existed, and so I go, okay, that's fine. And twenty years ago, in fact, this was actually more than twenty years ago, nobody could touch the dunes, and so it was, it was equal across the board. Everybody was playing by the same rules, nobody could touch the, the dunes at all, and, and so I go, fair is fair. And I also thought, you know, nature at play. I'm in favor of nature at play, you know, let it do its thing, and let the dunes, you know, the movement of sand or whatever, let, let it play itself out. I go, for all those reasons, I said, yeah, you know, my interpretation of that, um, no view enhancement, I was okay with that twenty years ago. There's a lot of things that have changed since then, and, and one of the things that's changed is that, all of a sudden, over time, man has been allowed to manage their dunes. They push sand out onto the dune, and, and, um, and what's happened is, we, we're all aware that that sand has moved into other segments, and so the dune, the sand, it's not nature at play anymore. It's man and nature, and that's a game changer. That, if you think about it, that is really a game changer, it is not what we signed up for, because it was nature in play at the time this, this restriction was, was created. And so now man's pushing sand out, and now we're the recipient, if you, if you really say, okay, you lost that battle, or whatever, you, and you, we interpret it that dune view enhancement grading is, is, um, is not maintenance, it's any kind of, of grading, then how fair is that? Think about it. The, the rules have changed, and so I think this is the time, this is the, this is the meeting, this is the time to say, fair is fair, and, and let's look at this as a holistic system, and let's look at the impact of, of what has happened in the last twenty-plus years, because it has changed. We support area-wide, comprehensive dune management plan that treats all segments the same. Our primary concern with the current draft plan is that appears to exclude properties and portions of the littoral cell north of Breakers Point, specifically Chapman Beach. Makes no sense. The city boundaries include it, the overlay boundary includes it, it's all part of the natu, of the same natural beach system. Why, why is one segment of, of a complete beach system being ignored? Doesn't make sense. The draft plan is intended to follow statewide planning Goal 18, beaches and dunes, which states. The plan shall cover an entire beach and four dune areas, subject to an accretion problem, including adjacent areas, potentially affected by the changes in flooding, erosion, accretion as a result of dune grading. Entire beach and four dune area. It continues to say, four dune grading needs to be planned for on an area-wide basis, because the geologic processes of flooding, erosion, sand movement, wind patterns, and littoral drift affect entire stretches of shoreline. Dune grading cannot, cannot be carried out effectively on a lot-by-lot basis, because of these area-wide processes, and, and the offshore site, and the offsite effects of changes to the dunes. This is all one beach system. Exclusion of Chapman Beach would be a lot-by-lot grading in violation of Goal 18. Each segment of the beach impacts the others. Sand pushed onto the beach typically migrates to the northerly segments. Sand buildup on Chapman Beach belongs to the beach system. It cannot be ignored, it should be used to replenish eroded beaches to the south, it belongs to the system. Any beach segment left out of the management plan would be the recipient of managed sand pushed out by others, resulting in an unnatural accelerated buildup of dune height, causing unreasonable harm and hardship. It's exactly what's happening. You look at, you look at where the sand is moving in the system, and, and you may have four to six feet of, of increase in height south of Chapman Point, and you, you have erosion south of that, and all the other beaches, and so all this sand is kind of moving, 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 but it is being dumped on one particular segment, and that's the Chapman Beach segment, and it continues to, to grow sixteen to twenty feet compared to four to six feet. How can we ignore that that's happening within this system? Isn't it time to, to interpret what the deed restriction, what was intended, and what does it say to the people? What did that restriction say to the people who bought properties and, and built? To me, and I know that I share the same view, it's, I can't level a grade to improve my, my view. It said nothing about managing the view, or managing the sand that piles up, and, and trying to maintain a view that, that was original. You know, set some guidelines, set some rules, you know, don't let grading go below a, a safe height that protects the, from large waves, you know, maybe, maybe have a, you know, maybe a four to six maximum, you can grade at a single time, you know, put some rules on all of this, that makes perfect sense. But I tell you what... But I tell you what, view enhancement grading, to me, is not maintenance. And we need to, we need to spend some real time to interpret, what, what do the words really mean? And is it, is, does it need to be redefined twenty years later as all these other changes that we've acknowledged have happened in this system? We're going to say, well, there's one segment that's stagnant that this can't recognize? History? And you're going to lock in something that's going to go another twenty years? And we're, I tell you what, you're going to want our sand and we're not going to sell it. Tell you, we're, we got the, we got the bank, it's full. It's, it's got so much equity in this bank that, that, man, I'll tell you what, California's going to be knocking on our doors to get some of it. So I had another question, and that question is, why isn't greater consideration being given to timing the dune grading? You know, when seasonal winds blow to the south, letting the natural system, working with nature, let the natural system replenish the sand toward those eroded beaches to the south. Now that means summer grading. When, when you're doing summer grading, you know, granted, the winds to the south are, are not as, as strong, but they still are working with nature to, to replenish that sand where it belongs rather than a significant concern about, well, the tourists might not like it. Think about, are we trying to work with nature or are we trying to, to kind of comp, accommodate man and, and, you know, other things that are economical or maybe not really important to the decision that we're, that we're trying to make here to make good decisions, a good decision about managing a, a beach system, an entire latoral zone? This is a whole beach system that, that, you know, we need to step back and we need to, to really take a look at what it is. And I know there's been a lot of pressure for, you know, we don't want you to do anything. And it's, it's like, yeah, if you're going to listen to that, listen to that for all beaches and, and don't make one decision, you know, one beach allowed to do one thing and the next, you know, not. Make a, let's make a good decision here that really supports nature and really supports the system and, and really makes sense for, for all the concerns.
Okay, I think, are, time to wrap it up.
Let me close. The proposed plan is not an area-wide comprehensive plan as required if Chapman Beach is being excluded, as it is obviously a part of the Chapman Beach system. There is simply no defensible, scientific, or legal basis upon which to exclude Chapman Beach from the city's plan or to treat it any differently. There's a couple of, of comments I have about the Chapman Beach Management Unit. The name of the management unit should simply be Chapman Beach, not Breakers Point. Breakers Point's just a residential development. Chapman Beach, north of Breakers Point Development, is geographically and geologically indistinguishable from the beach west of Breakers Point. It has accumulated as much, if not more, sand than found around Breakers Point. There is no logical reason for creating at the perception of a distinction. And the beach within the city ends at Chapman Point, which should be used to describe the northern end of the Chapman Beach management system. Thank you.
Okay, I have a, a comment and a question. And I, and I don't know the answer to the question, so it is, uh, the, the comment is that for the time that I've been on this body, it's consistently been my understanding that we do not have the power and the authority to do what you're asking us to do. I understand, I sympathize with the fact that you would like us to do it, but it's my understanding that we, we do not have the authority to. My, my question is this, has your organization appealed this through the courts to, to Luba in the past?
We have not appealed it yet. We're in the process of understanding it and, um, it is, um, it, it was a condition by the city for some reason. That's, that's really odd. You know, the oddest part about all of this, usually that comes from, from another jurisdiction that says this is, you know, this is what can or cannot be done. But for some reason, there was influence within the city that said, we're going to include this as, as a restriction from the city. So I think that that part of it, the city needs to say, was that the right thing to do? And maybe, maybe-
I, I haven't gotten any impression that the city is inclined to do that and, uh, and I guess I, I would suggest to you that what you're going to have to do is, is pursue it through the, through the state, through the court system and, and to Luba. And I don't know what, you know, they may, they may back you or they may tell you no, but I don't think-
All right. I, I-
Anybody?
Oh, no, I just, I, I, I don't know. I just thought that it had been addressed one time in the past.
I, I don't know either. Mark, do you know?
Um, no, I don't. There is a deed restriction. I, I know two things is both, both of our attorneys, our land use attorney and our general counsel are adamant that we're not making decisions about that deed restriction or interpreting it or, or giving Mr. Snodgrass legal advice about it. So it really is, it's, it's interesting to know about, but it's, it's not on the table for your decision-making, as you mentioned.
Right. Yeah.
So I understand what Marcia said and, and I understand it was not on the table, but it probably should be and it probably will be on the table. And we're, we're trying to understand it, but we certainly don't want to have the city bless a pro, a, a management plan that locks in a single segment that's going to interfere with what you're trying to accomplish here. I mean-
I hear you.
Yeah.
I, I, we're, we're not going to go against the advice of our, of our attorneys.
What we'll do, what we'll do is one, I guess-
It's the deed restriction, period. That we're not going to address the deed restriction, period. We're just not. We can't, and we're not going to do it.
Yeah, maybe not in the-
You have, you have an argument, both of you have an argument with what the city is proposing in terms of, quote, "a management plan for the dunes." And if this management plan, you know, is viewed by people at Chapman's Point as contributing to, you know, further accretion of sand at, you know, at your end of the beach, uh, and the, the science is pretty clear that your end of the beach is part of the same beach. You have a perfectly good argument to present to the city council when it takes these things up again.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll take, we'll just try to be smart about it. We're trying to understand it. We're not trying to be unfair, but, but I just think it, reason says to take a look at it and, and to see what really makes sense. And, and if there, if it's not this body, I mean, I think this body participates because the city did set the, set the restriction or blessed the restriction and, and maybe, maybe there's a different avenue we need to go. So I just would like to have that, keep an open mind.
And have you ever considered that maybe the, the dune grading at Breakers Point has contributed to the accretion of sand far the north?
Absolutely. Everybody's, any, any sand that gets pushed out, we know, moves forward and if somebody can't do anything about it, you, you're just dumped.
So maybe that's a great argument against dune grading at Breakers Point.
Anywhere.
It's causing more sand to gather at the north, north end and spreading the north, the northernmost part of the beach.
You could, you could, that's exactly right. Or you could say, let's, let's figure out a smarter way to dune manage and, and allow, allow that grading and figure out how that it's going to be reused in the system. Figure out how-
Or no dune grading so we don't hurt the northernmost part.
Yeah. Well, you look at what's happening. I mean, we're twenty feet high.
I hike down all the time, so I know. Okay?
Something that occurred to me while you were talking, it is probably a non-starter, but I will try to remember to, to ask, uh, Mr. Dr. Allen, uh, and probably some of the other people involved, is the question of whether the deed restriction, uh, prevents you from pulling out the European beech, beech grass, which would then, I would expect, have the effect of blowing thousands of tons of sand up into your yards and roofs and so forth where you would probably be allowed to remove it. This, this is pure speculation and I'd-
I'm open to anything. I like that idea.
I, I will try to remember to look into that.
Jonathan Swift, I think, developed that.
Thank you. I don't mind being put in his category. Are we ready to move on to the next? Thank you, sir. Who's up? Who's next, sir?
I'll try and be brief. I got a call a, oh, maybe a couple hours ago to come and talk a little bit tonight about values, and that's all I'm here to talk about, property values and, and from my perspective as to what I see. Oh, Jeff Etchison, excuse me, uh, P.O. Box thirteen sixty-one, Cannon Beach, Oregon. And I worked at Duane Johnson Real Estate here in Cannon Beach. And so I've seen, you know, over the years, I've been doing it since nineteen ninety-four, and I can remember Breakers Point. I'm just talking specifically about that and also pretty familiar with Chapman Point because we've sold a lot of, a lot of property up there as well, so. But anyway, I've seen the dunes, you know, Chapman Point has lower units and upper units. And I can remember when I first started from the lower units, you used to be able to see the ocean. And that slowly has gone, you know, away, and now it's starting to happen to the second level units. And I've got pictures and photos. I could have probably gotten a lot more, but like I said, I had just a short period of time. But the most recent example I have, I just sold on February ninth of this year, a lower level unit that was on the market for two years. The homeowner or the condo owner in this case paid five hundred eighty-one thousand dollars for the unit back in two thousand and five. I just sold it for three hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. So what I'm seeing is values going down on all those units, particularly the lower units. That particular homeless, our condo was on the market for two years and every time I would show it or other agents would show it, beautiful condo, well-appointed, but they'd walk in and you're looking at dunes, you know, you don't see anything but dunes, and so they were turned off by it. And consequently, the value has gone down because an ocean view does have value to a condo owner itself. And I'm not saying that's the only reason. I'm smart enough to know that that's not the only reason values go down, but in this particular case, it does have a huge impact on itself. And most of the homeowners there, they're not anti-environment, they're nice people, they're hardworking people. They just want to protect the value of the, of the place they bought. And in most cases, even nowadays, values are going up and, and in these particular cases, values are going down, so. And it could impact you guys initially too, because I've seen the dunes. I, I've sold the homes over there and lots over there and, and I can see the values here going down, so. I do have photos and, and, you know, the facts on this particular case. I'm happy to leave it with you guys or I'm open for any.
Jeff?
Yeah?
Okay, are, um, do you feel that maybe the fact that you can't rent a unit for, um, less than, what is it, two months at a time?
Well, they've, they've always had that. No, they've always had that in place. And even when I started, they had that in place. And so can it have somewhat of an impact? I suppose it has some. You know, obviously the economy went down in two thousand and eight, too, so that has somewhat of a factor. But, yeah, I don't know that that necessarily impacted because it's always been that way. And when it was that way when I started, values were increasing, so.
Okay. And were there other units, lower units that have sold?
Well, I was involved with this one. Most of them aren't selling. I've, I've seen others over there for the very same reason. They're beautifully appointed units, but people go into them and they, you know, when you say oceanfront, you anticipate you're going to see the ocean. Uh, in this particular case, you don't. And so they're not selling. This unit took two years to sell.
Thank you. Mark, do you want? Someone else?
End up with these over on this side of the table, that'd be great.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Can I add one?
Yeah, sure.
One thing that might be worth keeping in mind is all of the mountainous growth of the dune is, um, west of the vegetation line. It's under, it's under state authority, actually. It's, um, and state management policies might end up prevailing.
I wish you luck.
Well, that's, I used to be, um, a long time ago, I was, I was the legal counsel for the Maryland Department of the Environment and I presided over a lot of regulation promulgation. And the, the rule of thumb then was to make sure it was broad so that it encompassed any developments that came forward. So I, I would just, the main argument, I think, for making sure that the management zone is not just designated for Breakers Point, but for the entirety of Chapman Beach, it just leaves open possibilities because you may want to manage the entirety of, of Chapman Beach with or, you know, with or without regard to a deed restriction. The state may want to. The state may want to address the entire four dune if they're going to address part of it. It may make no sense not to address all of it.
Personally, I have no animus against your position. I'm just saying that we, we don't have, we don't have any-
I know, I, I fully recognize that it's not before you, may never be before you. But the, the idea is to impress upon you that, that total beach management is, is just wise, you know? Just disregard altogether the deed restriction. Don't even think about it. Just do what would make, what ordinarily would make sense. And then if other restrictions come into play, fine. But why tie your hands behind your back management-wise when, when state policy and wise geological policy anyway requires a holistic approach? That would be what I'd leave you with.
Okay. Are, and-
This is going to be really short.
I dare you.
So, um, you know, this deed restriction is, it's a man-made lie. It's something that could change in the future or, or not. I mean, it's, who knows? You take it to the courts and they, all of a sudden, it, there can be, there should be an interpretation that says view enhancement doesn't mean you can't manage. And so that's a perfect possibility. So why not, why not make a dune management policy that is good for all the whole dune segment and then let the restriction have its own life? And, and subject to, then, then a certain area, a certain beach is subject to a restriction that they need to honor. But at least the council, at least the planning commission has, had got a plan that is correct for all of the dunes, that the deed have its own life.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I take it that there is no one, no other proponent of the request at this moment who would like to speak? We'll move on. Are there presentations by opponents of the request? Mr. Amos?
Rex Amos, uh, five-five-four, North Large.
And, and your mailing address?
P.O. Box four-nine-four.
Thanks.
Jesus, Mother Nature must be laughing right now because all the sand is moving from one place to the other. I think that they just gave a good example of why there should be no dune grading because if Breakers Point has, we said, that just don't do any, let nature, let Mother Nature take care of it. We bought our property forty years ago before Breakers Point. We moved here twenty years ago permanently. We have walked from, from your places every morning for ten years, from Chapman Point to Les Shirley Park along the creek. We've seen the dunes change so much every year. Right now, they're shaved off, they're just cliffs, but you can still get down through Seventh and Oak Trail. You can come from Les Shirley Park, go along, and pretty soon at, at Fifth- at Fifth, where the Fifth Street continues, that is off, and you'll be able to get down there, or else Bruce can do what he did before, grade it. But this whole idea of the city being responsible for property values really is baffling, because I, when did that ever come out? We do our best, I mean, I'm not here to be an adversary, I mean, I know you shouldn't have an argument if you don't consider the other side, but they get into the case of, you know, if you don't do something, it could bring a lawsuit, if the kids can't play on the beach, well, we're going to have problems, you're going to have problems, the city will have problems, but there's access, there is, how much access do you need? And if the dunes keep growing, the Anglo-ho's will fall, we've seen it, we've seen it time and again, year after year, they change, they change constantly. But I wish that, you know, you should have continued this for the speakers on our side, I suppose, because they could make it because of the snow. I'm just thinking that it comes a time when you have to decide if you're going to leave something alone, or make it totally unesthetic. Nature now, the dunes are beautiful, I hope you've all walked along, and it's just gorgeous. They rise up, shaved off, and now they suddenly have almost geological strips along the sides, and the thought of them coming in with bulldozers and bulldozing that all down, then going up to Chapman Point, doing the same thing, there's life in those dunes, they're, you know, you don't have to see everything, I know there's some life there. And I just think that if you make a decision for any kind of grading... As far as I determine, the city owns quite a bit out to Ecolot Creek, and along Breakers Point to Fifth, and then they have that plot. But if you look, that's the city's part, this is the state's part out here. Well, you're going to have to have the state really involved with this before you start shoving sand around, and in fact, if you go up to Chapman Point and start moving sand out there, you better have the ODFW involved, because you're going to start dealing with the clams. Well, anyway, there are other people who'll say it better than I do, so, thank you.
I have a question for you. I was down, not too long after last month's planning commission meeting, I happened to be down at Les Shirley Park, and I had heard that at that meeting, one of the categories of argument was the access, and I read the material and listened to the recording of the meeting. And I, when I was at Les Shirley Park, I looked along the creek, and there were people walking along next to the creek, out to the beach, and I thought, gee, it seems to me that when I'm down here, that's accessible. You mentioned, and I hadn't remembered this, or hadn't realized it, that you walk along there all the time. Is that access from Les Shirley Park open, essentially, all the time to the beach, or are there times when the creek comes up, so you, so you can't walk?
And if you can't go there, you can go to the end of Larch and walk down the sand there. Now, I know, people in firm, they talk about, all these people talk about, you know, granddad can't get down. Well, hell, I'm 82 years old, and I have, you know, and I walk there every day, with Diane, with Luann back there, Stacy, we are...
I'm not sure I would, I didn't mean to get into a long conversation, I just wanted to...
I know, I'm getting animated here, but...
Interrogate your current experience, sorry.
But I do think that, well, for instance, if something's wrong along there, we make sure people know about it. When Fifth Street was sheared off, when you go down from Breakers Point, I took pictures and sent them to Bruce, so he could see that if, I said, if people from Breakers Point come down now, they're going to fall off the cliff, because we walk in the dark. In winter, we're walking out in the dark with our flashlights, so we know when something's wrong, I mean, we spot it. And so I took a night photo for Bruce and sent it to him, and trying to be neighborly. We have had no trouble with Breakers Point, we've always been good neighbors, and I want to do it. Even though we don't like their penitentiary lights up there, we still try to be good neighbors, all right?
Thank you. Other opponents of the request, or of the changes? Is there a staff response, summary or response?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Any additional presentations? Okay. The hearing is being continued, so I'm not going to close the public hearing and move to consideration. We will, I hope, get to consideration next month. It is being continued to, say again what the time and place and so forth?
March 22nd, 6 o'clock PM.
Thank you. Give a few seconds if there are people who came only for that and would like to leave.
You can take a short break?
Yeah, let's take a short break.
Steve, please, for the restrooms. Hoping to get this at least to close, but that's at least part of the plan.
But we're going to decide this, right?
Affordable housing thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could get that done.
Before we reconvene, I wanted to take notice of the fact that our city manager, Bruceon Dennis, is here, and appreciate you sitting in. Hope you're getting a good impression of the town.
I know, I'm just creating impression. I'm just making it better.
You ain't seen nothing yet.
Okay, moving on to the next order of business. This is a continuation of a legislative hearing regarding consideration of ZO 18-02, workforce housing amendments. Is there a further staff report at the moment?
There really isn't much of substance has changed since the last meeting. You asked me to notify the R3 property owners, which we did, the notice list is in the back of this packet here. We resent the material, there's a couple of additional items that you didn't see in January that are now here, otherwise, the proposal is what you saw in January.
Okay, thank you. Are there, oh, the usual boilerplate, pertinent criteria, this is a call for public testimony. The pertinent criteria to be considered regarding this request are in the staff report and criteria sheets next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Are there presentations by proponent, actually, that's right, I guess there are proponents?
Reinmar Bartle, P.O. Box 117, Cannon Beach, I'm representing Mike Clark and Coaster Properties. I've been before you several times, I think this issue's been well discussed and vetted, so really, I just encourage you to recommend approval to the city council, but it certainly, if you can't steer your way there, please do pass it on to the city council. I think we've had a pretty extended discussion about the concept, so appreciate your attention to the matter, answer any final questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there presentations by any other proponents? Are there presentations by opponents of the request? Moving right along, is there a staff summary or response?
Nothing from here.
Are there additional presentations? There does not seem, I don't recall that there was any request by any person withstanding to have a continuation, so...
This is the second hearing, anyway, so...
That's right. Well, I mean, somebody might have asked, and you might have had a reason to do it.
Nobody's requested a continuance.
Okay, I close the public hearing, and we move to consideration.
Okay, well, I have a number of issues. First one I'd like to bring up is that I find the whole, the whole sort of cast of this whole issue as being workforce housing, to be very discredulous, I'm sorry. There's nothing in, except the deed restrictions for condominiums and short-term rentals under 30 days, I believe it is, there's nothing else in the deed restrict... What makes us think that an out-of-town development company isn't going to come in, buy one of these buildings, and then jack up the rates to whatever they can get? There's nothing to stop them from doing that. I mean, I suppose if there was a deed restriction attached that said, that had a numerical value that could only be raised by the consumer index for the state of Oregon each year, that would be one way to assure that the housing stayed affordable. But I, I'm sorry, to me, there is nothing in this that would assure that this is going to be affordable housing, and it's just, you know, the proponents are all, you know, people involved in development and commercial-type endeavors, and, I mean, that's fine, but I'm just saying, I, this, the way it's written here, it's just, it's a disaster waiting to happen, as far as I'm concerned. I don't see how you could assure any of this is going to be affordable housing, and I think using that term is specious.
Well, frankly, several terms are used. It's workforce housing, it's affordable housing, it's the not-too-expensive, but not-too-cheap, middlely housing, you know, it's not defined what the real purpose here is, except to get more housing in, one way or another, and to do it by changing the comprehensive plan, and some restrictions that I think are some of the reasons why Cannon Beach is what it is today. And maybe it's not affordable in many ways for many people, but it's what the place is, and certainly, it's been quite successful at being what it is.
And there are other alternatives. There's, you know, there's the RV park, there's all kinds of things, there's the Tollivano Art, I mean, there was about four different other alternatives that were offered, the cottage housing thing, all of those are viable, you know, as alternatives. So if you're trying to get more housing, and if more housing in Cannon Beach that's low cost, I suppose the little cottage things would assure that, but I just, I just find it, it's, it's not affordable housing, because that's a government designation, and we don't meet that, you know, the population doesn't meet that, so that is wrong, number one. So workforce is now, what does that mean? What is, you know, it's just, it's very disturbing to me. And the parking thing, I'm sorry, the two, look, the way it was presented to us at the last meeting, I actually found it offensive. It was like, as if the people who are going to be working in the hospitality industry are not even human beings, they'll never, they never, they just walk to work and they walk home, that's all they do. They're never going, they're not people, they're not going to want to go to a movie, they're not going to want to go to the Rite Aid up in Seaside, they're not going to want to go visit a friend, or go to a party, or go to hear music, they're just going to walk to work and walk home. That is ridiculous. This is not a town with a sophisticated public transportation system, we just don't have it. I wish we did. I'd rather not drive all the time, but I'm just saying, I just think it's, I find it to be almost offensive, the way it was, it was almost as if you have some kind of a slave class or something in the town, and I just, you know, and the comparison with San Diego and Seattle is ridiculous. They have incredible public, I came from Seattle, I know the public transportation system there. Portland also has a great public transportation system. We don't have that here. So that parking thing, to sort of compare it to those, is, to me, ridiculous.
Well, to tie in with what you're saying on the parking, here we have lined out in the amendment where a studio or a one-bedroom unit with, a studio would only have .65 per unit. Well, a studio and a one-bedroom, they're going, most likely, all have cars, so the rationale for that reduction doesn't make sense to me. And the same thing with the two-bedroom and three-bedroom, and to me, particularly if you get into the three-bedroom situation, you've got, you've got two cars most likely in that household. So I feel like that's wrong. And I also object to the pipe change. I mean, there are several houses in this city that are three stories, and they meet the code requirements... the code requirements for that height. And in the R3 section, if you look at those areas, to me, what would fill in the look of what we have now would be if you have parcels that are on a slope where you can actually do a basement, three-bedroom, you can still get those three units in there. So, just a blanket opening of making the height up to 32 feet reminds me of going into Seaside. It's, you know, we have, you know, a different feel in the city. The other thing that I was looking at, if you look on the art, on the...
What page?
Yeah, this is page seven. Here, the RV parks are more attractive and more feasible as a rental community option, not only when it required significant public investment, there is also a fair significant loss of revenue. Even the smaller RV park rental housing scenario would require that about a dozen RV slots be lost in the anti-traditional multifamily housing development option, represented only for the city's property at Tollivana Hall, so on and so forth. Well, then you turn the next page, and it has... Taking this approach will allow the city to put in... To put places relatively quickly at a reasonable price for long-term rental for small households. It would not remove a significant amount of revenue from the city. This is because the city's model ops puts in a long-term rental unit that operates at 100% occupancy year-round rather than half of the year, allowing RV revenues losses to be potentially completed to offset the round. Well, to me, it doesn't make... Here, you have two conflicting statements in there, and if you're going to be renting an RV space year-round, you're going to be getting more income off it. So, I don't understand the rationale of them losing money on that option. So, yeah, I mean, I just feel like the changes are significant changes, and they are significant changes to the way the city operates. And in the case of units that are downtown, where there's already a premium for parking, lowering the standard for those units doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't. And... Oh, go ahead.
I guess I have a more global objection to this plan, and that is, we're going to take all of these available lots, however many they come up to now, and basically change the amount and the density of the housing on lots that are sprinkled in with other people who have already built, you know, the typical Cannon Beach houses in... On those lots. And I don't see why we want to rush in and all of a sudden say that these commercial lots and R3 lots should all be turned into lots that can, you know, become multiple-family dwelling, you know, apartment buildings, or whatever you want to call them. If this is such a good idea, I would much prefer starting with, you know, in this room, with someone saying, "I want a variance so I can build some workplace housing," or some affordable housing. And the only way I can do it is much like the last one we approved in downtown. And I don't see why we can't continue on that course. If any developer wants to come in here and propose affordable housing complex, come on in and, you know, tell us about the lot you bought.
Right, because then it's not going to be an open playing field for developers.
Exactly.
And that's what this is all about.
Exactly.
And, you know, when they talked about the RV park losing revenue as a reason, I wrote in my notes, "So what?" And that's what I wrote. Because, I mean, is that why? Because you're going to lose revenue on renting, you know, RV sites? That's why you wouldn't think of putting your affordable housing in a place... And that's just... What... I mean, what kind of a trade-off is that? You know, as far as the growth and the health of the city? It's a terrible trade-off.
Well, I mean, the other thing it does is it'll just promote more tourism and more traffic and a lot of things that, you know, a lot of people who live here year-round are complaining about.
Yeah, but it becomes a question of, do you care... Does this city care more about the people who live here and reside here year-round, or do they care more about the tourist industry? And I know they're interrelated, I know that, but I'm just saying, you have to, you know, the balance has to be right.
And I think rushing all of our zoning into new territory, you know, we don't have that much land left in this town. You know, and all of those R3 lots and C-whatever...
C1s.
C1s, you know, are... You know, a whole bunch of them are sitting down here in this little strip of... Between Hemlock and Haystack Heights, and I don't think I want to see 32-foot-high roofs when, you know, if I were in some of the Haystack Heights, how does that look out over the ocean, you know, sitting across the street from me?
But I love your idea about the case-by-case basis, because that makes a lot more sense.
We have some control.
Right. I mean, I personally didn't vote in favor of that, but I would welcome that kind of approach, just because then you can really look at each individual project. You know, there's going to be people from all over the place investing in this, if, you know, you just know that's going to happen.
Maybe they already have.
Yeah, that's true.
No, I certainly agree with the case-by-case case being presented to us and leave the statute as it is.
Yes.
I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads around here.
Should I move that? Oh, I can... Someone else can do that.
Art, I'm about to ask whether somebody is ready to offer a motion, but I want to make sure, and there... Once we've got that, obviously, there's still room for discussion. Is there anyone who would like to have a say on this before there is a motion? Okay. Someone have a motion that they'd like to offer?
I move that we return this without approval to the city council with the explanation being that we prefer the case-by-case approach to, you know, getting variances that would allow for more housing, or quote, "more affordable" housing, when a developer comes forward with a plan. Maybe that's a...
Sort of interpretation.
Yeah.
Are you prepared to move that we... We ask that we recommend to the city council that they reject this?
That they not go forward with this plan.
That they deny the amendments?
Yes.
Yeah.
And with the further recommendation that you were saying about dealing with applications on the case-by-case.
For purposes of maintaining control.
Have you got that in a form that's clear? I have recognized that a lot of times, we haven't given you something that was clear enough. There have been times when I've been annoyed with the city council for not following us better, and I think that's sometimes been my fault of not... For not insisting that we give you something clearer.
You might not bother to listen to the tape or really reading any of the minutes either, I don't know.
Anyway, so...
Yeah, I think I've got it just a bit.
So, you've got a clear notion of what the motion is and what we're recommending to the city council? Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Robin's second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion before we vote? Alicia?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Mr. Burr?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Chair Muggie?
Yes.
That's tentatively queued up for the council and on April 3rd, with a work session probably in one of their March meetings.
Okay, I want to ask you a technical point about... Is it inappropriate for planning commission members to testify at the council meeting?
I don't think it is. You make it clear to the ear, speaking for yourself.
I think maybe I've even done that.
Yeah.
I can.
Yeah.
Have you? Okay, I just want to make sure.
So, yeah, if you're going to testify, I think you should make it clear that you're testifying as least a current planning commissioner, not on behalf of your six fellow commissioners. The minutes, I think, speak for themselves, and then the motion is something that you all made. They certainly may ask you questions about, you know, the discussion, that sort of thing. You should respond to that, but without, you know, don't speak for the entire planning commission.
Right. I would dare.
Yeah, I didn't think you would, anyway.
Anything before inviting the authorization for the chair to sign the appropriate orders? I'll move. Okay. Second? Do we do that by consensus? consensus for that? Okay. Informational items, we have a tree report someplace down here.
It's the last page of your packet.
I've rearranged mine more.
Okay.
But I...
Table that looks like that.
Yeah, let's see.
Bean Town?
Really? Okay. If that's the name of a person who's taking offense, I apologize. The name... The second name of somebody, of the applicant is Bean Town.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think that's a name, that's a business, isn't it?
Probably.
Yeah, this is a business.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a...
Marge and Jeff Bean Town?
They're from...
Maybe I... Hey, I have encountered much stranger than ever worse than that.
It's a business name, isn't it? It's a business name.
I know. My mother used to always be amused at the fact that when she was working at a hospital, one of the doctor's names was Katzenellenbogen, which is Cap's elbow in German. Back to business of sorts. Are there ongoing planning items?
Nothing from me.
Go to the order? Karen? No? Okay.
I have one thing. Are they planning on putting artwork back up on the walls here?
Yeah, we took it down for some work sessions, we got some of it rehoned. One of the frames on one of those pictures broke, so we're having that repaired. So, yeah, it is... The plan is to put it back up.
Okay. And we're going to get the maps back again?
Maps are down for good, I think.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Are you asking for comments, Matt?
Just if anybody had... Go to the order. I was in... I wasn't asked... I wasn't requesting, I was offering an opportunity if somebody...
Jan, are you sure you don't have a comment?
At the march.
Are you sure you don't have a comment?
Well, I apologize, I missed the carry-on grading of the games, likewise, and I just had to...
Well, that gets continued.
Yeah, it's continued through March.
Yeah. Okay. Come join us next month.
Excellent.
And if you want to hear what was said, I hadn't realized that these were being put on, but...
Yeah, the recording from this is not going to go up tomorrow, but it might go up on Monday.
Good enough, thanks.
Does the council ever listen to the recordings?
Some of them do.
Do they?
I know they look at the minutes, because they call me about them.
Okay.
But I occasionally listen to... They'll occasionally listen to minutes or recordings, particularly when there's something of yours that's before them, a HEO or something.
I listened to the last month's meeting over the course of a week or so, and struggled with getting it to stay on my iPhone while I sat down with my laptop. But that's my technical difficulties. Okay.
Thanks very much, everybody.